... Before your education meeting, I'll come to order the five certified certifications. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve each amendment? President, I move we approve the amendment of the following amendment, additional certified and classified personnel actions for consideration, item E3. Is there a second? Tim, did you have a vote on that?
Yes, I said aye.
Okay. All in favor?
Hear me?
Yes?
Yep.
Okay. Motion carried. So we'll just let the record show that Tim Cruz is joining us via conference on the faculty background. At this point, we'll move to, are there any public comments to recognize the choir students?
Mr. Singh, is there a call at Garden City High School?
Yes, they're all in the wings, as it were. Okay. I just want to say it's a pleasure to be before the board again, and I'm getting used to this and getting more relaxed as I do this. It's kind of neat. I wasn't nervous this time or as nervous. We're going to be honoring our music department as well as our Buffalo Broadcasting program. So we're going to start with the choir and the singers because they have a rehearsal here in about 25 minutes. So they're gonna go first and we'll start with Ms. Jane Vanderhoff and the following staff members will introduce themselves and their respective students and awards and such. So, thank you.
Good evening. Come on in, guys. I'm Jane Vanderhoff and I'm one of the vocal music instructors at Garden City High School for four more days. And I'm very proud to present our students. Mr. Singh asked us to talk about our successes and the numbers in our program. The seven-day, every-day schedule has had a very positive effect on their achievement. However, the numbers have dropped, so don't let that discourage you. We have about 170 students enrolled in choir. Last year, there were about 25 more, but that is due to having one less choice. However, the quality of their learning has improved, so that's good. We have two major events that we participate in. One of them started last fall, and that's the all-state process. We had 2,500 students from across the state of Kansas audition for all-state choir, and in February, 256 made it to the state level, and six of them were from Garden City High School. And I would like to introduce them now. First of all is Bailey Almas. This is her third year. She, they didn't, they forgot their medals. That's okay. Oops. That's quite an achievement. Brett Baldwin, Luz Labra, this is hers, is this your second year? Yes. Elena Lopez and Erica Ramos, her third year also. They receive a medal and all kinds of scholarship offers, which is what we hope for. And Brandon Smith, his second year also. Brandon also was recognized at the state level for his original composition, "A Light in the Sky." He won a statewide contest and performed at one of the opening concerts at KBA, which is a great, was a great honor. This is the highest level that they can achieve in this, in the all-state process. It is all work on their own. We do not work during class, and it is very difficult for them to achieve this, and we're very proud of them. The next process that we have is solo and ensemble, which is all on their individual and small group effort. We have 65 students that participated in this outside of class. We had 26 soloists that attended all the regional solo and ensemble, and we had 11 who, yeah, 26. And then we had 11 who received a 1 rating and went on to state, which at state is at the, all 6A schools perform together, which is very difficult. And we had three who received a 1 rating at state, and they are Bailey Almas and Erica Ramos and Drew Unruh. We had seven ensembles that went to regionals, and we made Mrs. Baldwin and I, who, she is a wonderful teammate. We would not be where we are without her help, and I'm glad she's here tonight to be recognized. We had seven ensembles for a total of 48 students that went to regionals. Six out of the seven received 1 ratings and could have gone on to state, but a couple of years ago, we decided, we made an executive decision to just take our soloists. Taking the ensembles means three more weeks of rehearsal on those songs when we feel it is more educationally sound to move on with our spring concert and so forth. So, we hope they forgive us, but we made 48 people stay home that could, that qualified for state, and we're very, very proud of them. We did take one girls' ensemble, a girl sextap, because they also had solos, and they received a 1 rating, and I want to recognize them too. They are Bailey Almas, we went again, Luz Labra, Elena Lopez, Erica Ramos, and Aubrey Hahn, who was a part of that great group, and Madison Adler, who is not here tonight. The rest, I don't know what else to say about these great students. They work very hard. We have a high school of much diverse opportunity, and they take advantage of all of it, and their achievements are attributed to them and their hard work, and we're very, very proud of them. And thank you so much for giving us this opportunity to present our students that we're very proud of. Thank you.
We're really excited to see where the music takes them.
Me too. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Congratulations, guys. Congratulations. 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 Congratulations.[585.12][585.12][S02. Thank you so much. 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 Thank you so much.[644.12][644.12][S02. So, Mrs. Johnson, do you have anything you would like to add? Folks? Do we have any questions or anything? Mr. Singh?
A little big, but I guess it goes, oh, that's why that's here. Hey, we're learning every day, right? Is that on TV?
Well, I just want to say I know how tough it is with the schedule and to fit in there all of the extracurriculars, but it's, when I say extracurriculars, I mean the co-curriculars. And with prior presentation and everything that the band students are doing, I just stand amazed at how you fit it all. And, you know, those are skills that translate to the rest of life as well, so congratulations to you guys and to the program as well.
I might share one of the, I had a retired music educator from the area catch me not long after your festival with Dodge, and he shared with me, he got to hear your groups perform, how impressed he was and how difficult the judging was, and the results that you guys got were phenomenal, so congratulations and thanks for all the hard work.
And I love the freshman representation. I mean, that's great. That's the strength of the program, so way to get up and get involved, guys.
Well, I would just like to thank you all and all of the band students because I know how much, how hard you work and how much extra time it takes. And I think it's really telling, the band is so important to the spirit of the school that even the college has only renewed having the band to unify the Garden City community college, and it really is sort of the heart and soul of a school. So, thank you all for doing that. It's an important job, and you all do a great job too.
I have a personal question for Bailey. By the way, I want to publicly thank you for your speech at graduation. It was very moving, and I've heard a lot of very positive comments from parents. But I'm curious, if you're interested, you want to go into music education, so are you more interested in the band side or the choral side or all of the above?
Uh huh. Me personally, I'm more into the choral side, but definitely marching band, like, it's hard to leave marching band. I thought about going to K-State and, you know, going to a school with a marching band just because it's so much fun and these are lifelong friends that I've made, and, but I love instrumental music, but, and it's definitely helped me in the choral aspect, like knowing tone and stuff like that and knowing pitch and everything. But I will miss band, but they have a pep band at Wichita State, so I might do something else.
If you want to teach choir?
Yeah.
Great. Awesome. Congratulations. Good job. Good job. Good job. Way to go. Good job. 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 Good job.
It's called "Rebuilding Trust," it's on YouTube. Check it out. Yeah, write that down. See if you're going to win that. Yeah, it's an amazing documentary. She helped out with that. Kaylee Knight, she won what? Station promo? What else did you win? Oh, yeah, and then station promo announcement for a video she made for St. Catherine Hospital. So, we're making these texts with the community and helping them out and making videos for them, and winning awards doing it too. Victor Garcia over here, won for state champion in PSA, as well as a few other awards in radio. What else did you win?
I think that's it. And I got third place in the...
Radio play-by-play, right? Cooper Thayer, won for state champion in radio play-by-play, and also a third place in enterprise news story. Jasmine Roscoe helped out Victor with his PSA, and also took third place individually in that category as well. Also, second place in our live newscast for radio. Luis Andrea Fuentes, two-time state champion this year in news feature and in a live news as well. Alejandro Sombrano won, and...
Live newscast.
Live newscast, and was state runner-up in live newscast. And what else did you win? Okay. And Jorge Perez won in state second place in hard news package. Marcus Archilado, you won state runner-up in news feature, right? And a few other awards. So, these are just a sampling of what we've got coming up the bike. A lot of these kids are sophomores, so we're going to have them for a very long time, and we're going to have continued success. Yeah. I got an email back today saying that it had been repaired. They're testing it out now, and should be on its way back maybe tomorrow. I don't know. Our FM transmitter, so. Which I'm equally sad, so.
That's a great job.
And I mean, the radio station has been a big boon for us because given these kids a lot of opportunities to do things that they wouldn't otherwise get a chance to do, so, yeah.
Thank you so much. It doesn't come easy, but you look at it over here, and you get the results. Y'all do a great job.
Congratulations.
Thank you again. Before I do anything with the pop tabs, I did want to let you know, at the high school, we have engraved brick papers, which some of you have purchased, and some of you just have forms on your desk, you know, saying, "I want to purchase some." Wanted to let you know, we were able to purchase four benches this past year for the high school bus area, proceeds from the benches. And I know that Mr. Cruz, and Mrs. Clifford, Dr. Hopkins, and Mrs. Nanaga have bricks that have been purchased, and we encourage anybody to do that. Any kind of extra project we can have. We know we need more benches up there, so wanted to be sure that you knew that was available. I have with us tonight, Roger and I have our nephew, Paul Elliott. Paul is a fifth grader, soon to be a sixth grader, Bernadine Sitz, and he helped me this fall with weighing and measuring and recording how many pounds of tabs we were having. And we used Roger's grandma's old digitals, or non-digital scale, the old scales. And Paul was wonderful in reading that scale and then going to the computer. And in fact, he was saying, "No, Aunt Janet, all you have to do to save it is go like this," and he was done much more quickly than I was. Want to recognize the people from the schools who had helped us, from if they are here tonight, out to Brown, Katrina Calvin, Abe Hubert, Allison Amos, Buffalo Jones, Tammy Riggs, Eda Sharman, and also Jenny Wilson is Judy Jennings, Florence Wilson, Charity Elliott, Garfield. We have Denise Martinez and Kelly Evans, Alternative School, Mary Martinez, Gertrude Walker, Tara Hill. Tara's a new counselor to our district, and you inherited the job, didn't you? She's done a great job. Karen Merle for Jenny Barker, Linda Finch for Clymel, Ronnie Knight for Victor and Alice, Hillary Watson for Bernadine Sitz. And I know this will surprise you, Roger Reed for Charles Stones, and Roy Cessna has been my contact person for the ESC. Tyson also helps us, as does Hard Rock Lanes, Teachers Credit Union. They serve as a drop-off point for us, and they have just been wonderful in helping. And we do have a lady at Garden City Nazarene Church who has been helping us also. Last year, we had 286 pounds, and I thought, "That is just phenomenal." You saw, if you remember those from last year, we've done more than that twice. This year, the total came to 534 and a quarter pounds. I mean, I was just bowled over. It was amazing. The top three weights from schools, we had one school with 94 and a half pounds, another school with 87 pounds, and another school with 81 and a quarter pounds. Now, we had decided to level the playing field. We were going to divide it out among students. Well, some of the ladies that I've been working with here at the ESC said, "I think we had one kid." So, they said the ESC won because they had 11 pounds that they collected in the ESC, and that would be 11 pounds per kid. But we aren't using their figures, but we do thank everybody who's doing this. What a thrill it is for the kids, whether they bring a little bag or they're bringing tubs, to know that that's helping their school with this contest. But it's also, bottom line, that can take care of five to seven days' worth of stay for a family. It's just phenomenal. Paul is going to help me this evening as we announce the winner. And this year, the traveling trophy goes to, can you read that?
Jenny Wilson Elementary.
Jenny Wilson Elementary. Per student, it was very, very close. It was like .3 pounds, .2 pounds, and .19 pounds. It was just very, very close competition. But we thank you very, very much for supporting this. And next year, I guess we need to look at at least 600 pounds. We'll try to improve. Linda, anything you'd like to say?
No, it's just great. It's a neat program, and our kids really got involved this year. Judy Jennings does an awesome job at getting them kind of pepped up and sets them there on the stage where everybody can see them. And I think even the community of Lakeland was helping her out some too.
Go to the Garden City Win Games in the past bucket's round. Somebody did it.
Oh, they did?
I thought maybe it was your school.
Oh, might as well have a little competition at the next game. All right, thanks.
But again, thank you for the support you give us. And don't forget the bricks. They make great graduation gifts, you know? They're just wonderful.
I totally understand why you didn't bring 500 pounds of tabs in here, but I do want you to know that you made a huge impact last year with half that amount, so I can't even imagine doing that, so good job.
Our living room looks quite interesting. Yeah, it looks quite interesting. We do have, for Clymel, they did ask if we could take theirs to Kansas City. One of their staff members stayed in the Kansas City Ronald McDonald House, and we both said, "Oh, gee, we'd have to go to Kansas City. That's where our kids live." So, we said, "Yes, we would do that." And they were just shocked. Roger took them the last time, and they said...
When they look at needing, saying, "I have some pop tabs. They want a bucket or a small sack." And when I bring in those large containers on two-wheelers, they are completely bowled over as well.
And they always say, "I can't believe Little Garden City does this." So, Little Garden City is making a huge impact. Hey, no problem. It's fun.
It is such an important program. I've been to a Ronald McDonald House, they're amazing. And it's just so important for us to know that, you know, it's our job to contribute to the greater, to the greater good, so thank you so much. Really appreciate it.
And I still say, I mean, Paul was great help. He was using this for some community service time, and it was wonderful help. Because at the beginning, I think it was at VO, we started out the year with 57 pounds just from VO, and Paul helped me get them out of the container. It takes about 30 minutes to get them out of those big jugs. So, he was wonderful help.
Paul, Drew, we want to shake your hand.
So, we'll move on to the Senate Jingle. The President, either to be presenting Senate Jingle, item P1 through P4A. All in favor, please raise your hand or say aye.
Aye.